The clock on the wall says four thirty. We didn't come to order, roll call.
Commissioner Bailey.
Here.
Commissioner Bunting.
Here.
Commissioner Gay.
Here.
Commissioner Sopsey.
Here.
Holmes.
Here. George, can we get to pray for us, even?
Yes, please. Most gracious, family father, we just thank you for the day that you've given to us and the blessings in it. We ask continued prayers, Father, for our servicemen and women overseas and at home, and all of our first responders, Father. We just pray special prayers for them. We ask now, Father, you be with us through this meeting, that we do things pleasing unto you. For it's in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation,
under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you.
additions and deletions.
Okay, so we're gonna do a couple of moving around. So if we could, we have a big agenda, so we're gonna move J up before G, right after public comment. Okay, so we'll do.
Four G.
Yep. And then we need to add J one, Yo and Yo interim administrator. Of, I think Michelle Sell is going to be zooming in from Yo and Yo to talk to us, so we're gonna put her on J one. We would like to move J five and six up to three and four, right after Liz from the health department, right after her, um, agenda item.
Moving.
Community development, yep. Up to three and four.
Five and six, actually.
Five and six is three and four, what is two?
Uh, that is the health department for the opioid.
Oh, okay.
That's gonna stay number two, that's gonna be number two, because we're adding a number one. And then we need to add an O, right after our closed session for, um, legal, we need to add a closed session for union negotiations.
Do you hear a motion to accept the agenda as amended?
I make a motion that we accept it.
Or. Moved by Jan, supported by Tim, to approve the agenda as amended. Any public comment?
I, I'm Barb Litt-Woller, and about five years ago, we purchased ten acres of land out on Tyler Road. And this was our, um, our fun place. We don't have a cottage or anything, and so we decided that we were going to go out there. We put a barn in, a pole barn in, and we've really been enjoying it, until the solar issue came about. The farmer who farms three sides of us has signed up for solar panels. So that means we're gonna be surrounded by solar panels. Um, Tim Gustaverson, who's a friend of ours, he could not come tonight to speak, but he gave me a little bit to say. Um, he knows of, personally, of two fires in the last month that had been started with lithium batteries. Speaking with fire chiefs, they shared there are many issues with lithium batteries catching on fire, reigniting after the fire is extinguished. Not to mention the additional training, how to manage the intense heat fires and protect themselves from the toxic fumes. Burden on our community is that managing these fires require firemen and women who have to have specific training, and it takes longer to contain and extinguish these fires. Thinking about the impact on our community is the expense for training and the additional time required to manage these types of fire, taking time away from the rest of the community. One would wonder just how many more firefighters would be needed in the community. One would wonder just how many more firefighters would be needed in the event that each solar farm has local lithium battery storage, and how would it, how many would be needed. Um, a concern of ours is lower property values. If we're surrounded on all three sides with these solar panels, what's that going to do to our property value? The inverters and transformers are loud, very, very loud, contributing to noise pollution. What happens when the panel is damaged and internal chemicals are leaked into the soil? In many cases, a foot of topsoil is removed, and some areas are replaced with sand, gravel, and limestone that is moved into the field. There is really not enough studies about human health hazards. Everything I've read online suggests a solar field should be one and a half miles from any homes. According to the Arcata Township ordinance, they have to be a hundred feet from our property line. So a hundred and, or one and a half miles sounds pretty good to me. What about the effects of electromagnetic frequencies on people and animals? Um, one reason we went out to our woods is my husband has always wanted to hunt. And he's been loving it the last five years.
Em, you've gone over here three minutes.
I, as a commissioner, I would like to hear the rest, what she has to say. I have questions for you.
Okay. Um.
Well, I have questions too, but she's got her three minutes.
No, I, we can request to hear the rest of it. I'm requesting to hear it, and then, uh, anybody else that has questions can ask too.
I have, I have a question.
Oh, okay, good. Okay, well, please finish.
Okay, um, there will be higher insurance rates for all. Um, fewer deer. How is this going to affect hunting in the future? Will there be lotteries like there are now for belt, bear, bear, and elf? Would there be hunting bans altogether? You know, I do understand that farmers have the right to do what they want with their farmland. We should have the right to do what we want on our ten acres, like hunting. With solar panels surrounding us, we've lost our right to hunt. We've lost our dreams of a beautiful, peaceful barn in the woods. Our rights have been taken away. Um, I'll.
I have a couple of questions for you. One of the questions is, um, did you say there's two people that, two farmers that put the solar panels in?
One farmer, he owns the property in front of us, on the side of us and behind us.
Okay.
Another farmer has the property on the other side of us, is not signing up.
Okay, and then, how long has he been there?
Um.
How long have they had it there?
Has the farmer owned that land?
Yeah, how long has he had the, uh, solar panels there?
He, he hasn't put them up yet. I understand that, um, there's not quite enough, um, people that have signed up in order to put the panels in. So, um, I, it's just, I mean, we're living day to day, hoping that, you know, it doesn't happen.
Yeah, okay, I was curious because, um, I was told that there's only two in Grashit County solar panels, and they're both at Pine River, but I also know of two other places that there are some, and they have not been recorded yet. Uh, I know they've been there for a while, so I'm, I'm assuming that that they've, that it'll be coming in, that there's actually four solar panels, or four, four different farmers or whoever owns the land has put them up. So I don't know what the commissioners can do about it. I mean, I don't own any land, and, but I understand where you're coming from.
That was my question.
Uh.
That was my question. I, I'm not for solar panels, but what, what could we do about it, particularly when they're already there? You know, what can we do?
Unfortunately, we can't do anything about it. We have a planning commission in this county that takes care of all that. So we're, we're a governing body that listens to people that want to bring their their complaints or their concerns. But we may individually talk to planning commission people or something like that if we feel in our hearts to do that. But really, we're a, a governing body that has really nothing at all to do directly with the solar or with the wind turbines, nothing to do with either one of them. But planning commission is where you've really got to start.
Right.
And so, but, but you can, you, uh,
There's.
I will, I will not torture, uh, given right to come here and, and, and voice your opinion.
Thank you.
That also goes on, uh, Face, or goes on YouTube. Another thing I wanted to ask is, um, one thing, you probably should go back to your township, and also, as of November last year, our governor has the right to come in and go anyplace she wants to, the state of Michigan. I'm assuming that that passed, where she can put wind turbines or solar panels anyplace she wants to put them. And what you had to do, if you were a township out in the country, you had to do ordinance before November. I, I know that one of my townships said they want the, the wind turbines to be so far back, not close to the road, because they farm, and they want to be able to get their tractors in there without having a problem with wind turbines. And also, they only allowed so many acres, I believe, that they put wind turbines on. Uh, each acre, or like I said, they can only have an acre or two acres, that they could put wind turbines, or I mean, the solar panels on. So you might check with your township, but see if they wrote an ordinance. If they didn't, then you're fighting with downtown, or down in Lansing, with the governor. She's the one that, um, and, um, puts this out.
I do have a copy of the Arcata ordinance, but I do understand that changes can be made if there isn't ordinance, ordinance. Um, I tried to get on the Arcata Planning Commission's agenda, but I did not succeed last month, so I'm going to try again in March. Um, I, you know, I honestly don't know what all I can do.
Get ahold of your, um, it would be your state representative, and ask them what happened with that down in Lansing.
I did.
Did you do that?
Yeah, and they weren't sure yet. I talked to, of course, you can't talk to the representative, you know, you talk to whoever answers.
Representative's representative.
Yeah. And, um, the person that answered the phone was not aware of what happened yet. I should call again.
Yeah, I would get back with them, because if she takes priority over everybody, then unless she got an ordinance already set, then I don't, I'm not sure what's gonna happen. But another note on this, it's my understanding that our new president is going to put a stop to all these wind turbines and solar panels. I just heard a, a little bit of it the other night on the, on the TV, but I haven't heard very much on it, just that he was looking into that too.
I did hear that, and I'm.
Thank you, ma'am, we really need to move on.
Thank you.
About. Any other comment? Okay. Amy Sell. Yo and Yo should be on.
Ally Barnes up there.
Consideration.
Why are you saying? Ally. Amy, can't hear you, Amy.
Hey, this is Amy Sell, can you hear me?
Yeah, you can, um.
Great, a pleasure, pleasure to, to meet you all. Um, so I was asked to, um, contribute to a discussion around the process of hiring an interim county administrator and finance director. So maybe I'll just spend a few minutes talking about the value that I've seen with this option, um, and some of my experiences that, uh, that, around the benefits that such an individual can provide to a community. Um, bringing in an interim professional manager can provide stability. Um, it allows decisions and the business of the county to continue to move forward. Uh, bringing in an experienced municipal executive can provide new perspectives and best practices to a community. Uh, I'm reflecting upon an, or, a, a city that I worked with that hired me to, uh, I was their fractional kind of HR provider, and in that period of time, I'm, they decided not to renew the city manager contract. So, um, and there were kind of significant issues going on in this community. Uh, there were a number of interim positions, there was a lawsuit with some of the department heads. So we brought in, so it was a kind of a, a challenging situation to bring in a full-time person, and brought in someone that acted as more of a turnaround fashion to kind of stabilize the organization and community for about a year. We addressed a number of short-term issues, um, and that positioned the city to be able to uh, be more attractive to more permanent candidates, as well as to, um, kind of reduce the requirements and qualifications of somebody to be able to come into a community that was, um, you know, functioning very well. Um, so, you know, not to say that all communities that bring in an interim are, um, need a, a turnaround, but just being able to provide, bring somebody in that can keep everything moving forward, um, answer any questions, provide stability and leadership to the staff. Um, it can help with a, a smooth transition is, um, is an option that I've, I've seen successful in the past. And, uh, wanted to share with everyone. Are there any questions or elaborate on my comments?
Uh, yes, can you hear me? My name's Tim Gay. Um, so you did your yearly audit? Are you completed with the, the yearly audit? Are your yearly audit?
That's the wrong person. That's, that's Ally.
That's Ally.
Talking to the wrong one.
Talking to the wrong one.
Yeah. Ally and Amy.
Ally Barnes will be up here pretty quick.
Oh, okay, I'm talking to the wrong person, sorry.
Amy, are you? I guess I'm confused, are we? Um, are you uh, putting out there that Yo and Yo offers a service to find an interim, or that you should be the interim?
Uh, no, that we provide the service.
Okay, you guys have a service that does that, okay. Because we, we all got an email about, I don't know how many different people have reached out to us, okay.
Yes.
That's, I just wanted to be clear, because it sounded like you had brought, went and did this in a city yourself, and that's, I was, I was confused on whether it was the service from Yo and Yo, you or, or yourself, you, okay, thank you.
What about a timeline?
Yeah, um, the Yo and Yo HR, yeah, now provides a recruitment for interim and full-time municipal leaders.
Okay. Not sure she heard your question.
His question was about timeline. What is the typical timeline to find, um, an interim? And then length of time that they're here, because I've, I've talked with a number of people during this situation we're in, on what, what that looks like, and I'm just curious, what does that look like from Yo and Yo's perspective as far as the, the timeline to find an interim? And then the length of time that that interim would be here before we needed the service to find our long-term replacement?
Sure, so.
Three, three-pronged question there.
Great, yep, so the, um, first question in terms of how long it can take. Um, I have been doing some scouting, I'm working with another community right now, and we were able to line up an interim um, in about a week. Um, I was able to, I, I networked at a recent conference and was able to identify qualified, a qualified candidate very quickly. Um, and so, um, so unfortunately, I don't have additional candidates that are kind of ready to go, so I would need to do a posting and then vet and then continue to network, so it could take two to three weeks to find and vet a qualified candidate. Activate my network, we have a newsletter that goes out to municipal leaders, we have job boards, we can search, I'm uh, well-connected with potential, um, interim leaders. Uh, but it would probably take a few weeks to find someone, I would say two to three weeks to find and vet candidates.
Hmm.
Um, in terms of the full-time position, I, I've done dozens of municipal leader searches, and we follow a process that consistently would um, get to the point of making an offer within twelve weeks. And then after that point, it, currently within an opportunity, they could start very quickly, if they are currently in a, in a
You're breaking up, like.
Bad.
Yeah, like, can't hear anything you're saying, no.
You need to provide thirty days' notice and then relocate, that full-time position would be about four months.
We, we've not.
You could not hear me at all?
Well, you're breaking up pretty bad, um. So I was just wondering, did, uh, did we get information from them as far as what she's speaking to, or is this just information only?
Just talk about. Just information only.
So when, so we would need from you, we would need a proposal. Okay? And I think it's probably, we would, we would appreciate it if you would send us a proposal as soon as possible. And then we can take, and we, and we can take it from there.
Great.
And then possibly we could, uh, down the line, if, 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 if we continue on with that, with that proposal, we can meet with you personally, so we can hear every word you say.
Will do.
Wh- what's your what's your thought process on the length of time, if we go the interim route? How long typically does it take for the interim to be in place before we start looking for the, the full-time replacement?
So about three weeks, two to three weeks.
Okay, that's the fine one, after we get them, we, you, whoever we decide to have search for our interim finds them. What's your outlook on how long an interim typically is here before you switch and go for a full, full-time one?
I would recommend doing both in parallel, so I would start to find the full-time and the interim at the same time.
Makes sense.
So we're gonna be able to find a full-time, that's contradictory to anything I've heard from any of the other people I've talked to, because we're gonna go looking for a full-time person while we have an open investigation, an open audit, and an open forensic audit, so we're gonna be trying to hire somebody who has no idea what type of shit show they're walking into. I don't know who we're gonna get. I, I'm being serious, I'm not trying to beat around the bush, I'm being serious. This is serious business, and I want to do it right. I don't want to make a mistake. I want this to be right, and that's where I'm like, I don't know who even would want this job not knowing what the job is to entail. They have no idea what they gotta fix at this stage of the game.
I don't want any administrator until this au- audit is through, until the forensic audit is through, until every stone is unturned. And then maybe we can think about getting an administrator. But that's my thing.
But that's. You can get an interim, interims will understand what's going on. They're here, they're just, they're just here to hold.
That's been my understanding, is the interim gets you through the storm.
That's right.
And once you're through the.
The interim.
There's a workout. A little bit.
Right.
Die or something.
Like I said, we look at the proposals, we decide which way which company we want to use.
Mm-hmm.
But the point is, we need to get an interim as soon as we can. Interms understand what's going on already. They might not know the nuances, but they've been here before. This is why they do the job they do, because they're in, they come in because they're interim. That's their whole purpose of being here.
I understand that perfectly, I'd.
So, I'm sure we'll learn a lot. When Ally comes up, we talk about the forensics audit, and what that would entail, and how long that might take. I think we'll learn a lot more from that, so we can go forward. And I agree with you a hundred percent, Steve. We can't have a new administrator coming in here with any clouds over our head. I'm just saying.
Thank you, Amy.
Hi, good evening, my name is Liz Brack. I'm the health officer for Mid-Michigan District Health Department, serving Grashit County. So I'm here today at the request of Commissioner Sopsey, who asked if I would talk and make a request to the board to form a Grashit County Advisory Steering Committee to review the opioid distribution money that Grashit County currently has and will be receiving for the, for the next eighteen years. So as a reminder, um, there was a settlement with the opioid companies that Michigan tapped into, and as a result, Grashit County also tapped into it. This was against the pharmaceutical distribution, the manufacturers, and in twenty twenty-two, there was additional pharmacies. So right now, Grashit County is looking at about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars over the next eighteen years. So my request to the board is that I'm able to move forward and, um, form an advisory committee made up of some listed or recommended community members who are familiar with what is needed to address substance use uh, in our community, and look at some of the wraparound services that would assist us with prevention, recovery, and education of substance use in our community. The letter that I, that I wrote you should be in your packet, and in the letter, I advised that, uh, we have previously worked with Miss, the Michigan Association of Counties, and we have taken some of the information that they advise myself. I also have Child Advocacy, Jennifer Stambo here with Child Advocacy today. We had met with them, and they had discussed how we should have some community members. I have listed what those community members should look like, and I would like to move forward and request that the commissioners, um, allow us to, uh, allow us to, um, establish an advisory committee and to come back and make recommendations to the commissioners on how the money should be distributed. There is a very large list known as Exhibit E of what those could be. It is consists, consists of, um, remediation uses of what the money could go to. So those in general would be prevention, treatment, recovery, and education of the substance use. I, I'm merely here as a moderator and as a leader in the community that would like to move this forward.
A hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Annually, or?
Annually.
It's annually, but the dollar amount is gonna trickle in over the next eighteen years. The Michigan Association of, of Counties has a website that shows what that dollar amount is, so I divided it by eighteen. The doll, there is a dollar amount already in your bank account since it started going out in twenty twenty-three. Um, so the idea would be, we would use as needed over the next eighteen years to support programs that support this need in our community.
One of the things I have to ask you too, it's over at the hospital, do you guys have the fourth floor?
I don't work in the hospital.
That's mental health, the health department, don't, this is health.
I'm thinking of mental health, I'm thinking of mental health.
Yeah.
I'm saying.
But that would be somebody that would be, is, is written down here, that we would like to have advice on, the steering committee would have some advisories from, um, the local hospitals, so my Michigan Health.
Because I know the health, our mental health has, that's who they put us on, the fourth floor. And are, would some of that money go to them?
It's possible, because they do a lot of work with, uh, with, uh, with, uh, people that have drug problems and things like that, so that's exactly what this is tailored to. We have a lot of different organizations within the county that do that. What Liz is, is asking us to do is to give her permission to start this process.
Commit.
Because it's, it's, it's a long process.
Oh, yeah, I understand all that, I understand exactly what you're saying.
And, and she's more than qualified and more connected than anybody that I can think of to put this all together, so.
I would like to see what your plan is, and, um, I would definitely, the money would be going to them.
That's just it, and that's, that's gonna be, that's gonna be transparent. All we have to do is give her our blessing as a, as a commission, and she can.
Start the process and to conduct.
I motion to start.
For her to go ahead and start on a plan. But I would think mental health would be a very big part of it, because if you have a drug problem, they're not gonna go to the health department, they're gonna go to the.
But, oh, they're, they're gonna take all of the funds that we have and distribute, distribute them to where they, they would consider the best use of the money.
And I would think all of the groups should also be in compliance with it too.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I'm okay with that.
Work.
Yeah, you said you wanted a motion, right?
Yep.
Yes.
Work. Moved by Tim, supported by Steve, to allow Liz to go forward, establish in this committee.
Yeah, good luck.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, nay, motion carried. Thank you, Liz.
Thank you very much.
Skipped around a little bit here.
Let us know. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
You're good.
I won't let you forget.
Okay. Tony.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Tony Miller. I'm with the, uh, Department of Community Development. We're here to do our annual report for last year's, for two thousand twenty-four. Who's got the paper? Is this, just me? Oh, I have my glasses on. What's my mask supposed to go with?
The person that really does the work.
We'll bust through this. And then at the end, um, I'm going to go through the building and some of my departments. And, uh, Bill's going to have a chance to speak on behalf of SESC, which is Soil Erosion Sediment Control. He handles that and zoning. And then Deandra is going to talk a little bit about blight. So, um, those are the departments involved. We've got building, zoning, soil erosion, sediment control, blight, and I also oversee buildings and grounds. Personnel. So I'm department head for community development and building inspector, building official for the county of Grashit. Uh, William Leonard is our SESC officer, blight enforcement and zoning administrator. Deandra Messer is our deputy permits officer. She's also certified to do SESC inspections and she does blight enforcement. Um, Kaylee McPherson has been helping us out. She's our co-op student this year from Itzak High School. And I'd like to start out by thanking Deandra and Kaylee both for putting that package together that you guys got and this slideshow. Did a great job on it. Buildings and grounds, um, my project supervisor started June seventeenth this year, Lonnie Richards. Been a great blessing, big boost to the county. Fixes, he's, he's just been amazing to have on board. And of course we've got Kevin. He's been here with us for a while. Uh, Sylvia Prudoma and Lori are custodians. Sometime here in the future, I want to talk about maybe bringing another custodian in. I, I don't hear any complaints. I hear good things about Lori and Sylvia. They're getting their job done, but there's no time with the amount of area that they cover to do any additional. There's a lot of things that we like to do a little more additional on. They cover a lot of ground. They cover Commission on Aging, um, Sheriff's Department. These buildings, a health department. Um, actually Dave from nine one one was asking if maybe we could help him out. If we had additional personnel, we could work something out. But we've got enough to deal with right now. But future, I'd like to look at that.
Look at budget year coming up.
Yeah. So Continued Education, NMCOA is Northern Michigan Code Official Association. Bill and I are both members. Um, uh, we're both licensed builders, but we're also licensed building inspectors. We do plan review and, uh, building official. In order to maintain those licenses, we have, have to have a certain amount of Continued Education credits. So we joined, um, Northern Michigan Code Official Association. And, uh, seven months out of the year, we go up to Gaylord, a big group of inspectors and they have a presenter and we get our required credits.
It's a yearly thing? You have to go to get your credits?
Monthly.
Monthly?
Monthly. We go, actually I'm going Friday. We're going up Friday.
Okay.
Yeah. When I first started, we used to take Dale and Paul and from St. Louis and all of us, but, uh, yeah, it's a good program. So now we're going to talk about some of the permit activity. And this is a, a four-year comparison. You've got all this information in your package, but we'll bust through it pretty quick. Um, that, uh, right there is the number of permits issued. We are down a little bit from previous years. Um, the inspection activity was up. Um, but permitting down a little bit, nothing that I'm really concerned with. You'll see throughout this that in the last four years have just been a roller coaster. And, uh, but some of those years when it peaks and we've issued a lot of permits, those permits are still open. We're still dealing with them. Um, it takes a lot longer to get material. It takes a lot longer to, for people to get stuff done. Weather's a factor, of course. But, okay. So income, we're about the same as last year. Um, a little more in Elma this year. Um, we got some new businesses that came into the city of Elma and Pine River Township. So, but you can see that chart goes way up, back down, way up, back down again. But we're kind of flatlining. We're in good shape. Revenue wise, we're doing good. So addressing, we do addresses for, uh, I don't do the cities, but we do everything in the county. And that was down, but that's, that's trendy too. You know, that's mainly new homes. Uh, the one big reason why they were up is I did a lot of turbine addresses. Um, it's important for them to have, uh, have those addressed. And actually I believe in the GIS now for nine one one so they can, somebody's out there working gets hurt, they know where to find them. So that's why that looks like it does. Usually addresses one or two a month, something like that. So, Tony.
Mr. Administrator Leonard, would you like to speak?
First, I want to thank the board for everyone being here tonight. And we all appreciate it. Secondly, I want to echo what Mr. Miller said about Deandra and Kaylee because without those two, Mr. Miller and I wouldn't be here. We're, we're about most of this. They're really good at it. As soon as day goes by, you know, I have to go, I say, uh, Dee, what should I do about this? And I, I get a lot of help. Let's talk about zoning a minute. First, you have to understand, quick review. Grashit County, sixteen townships. Of those sixteen, Grashit only zones, six of those. Elba, Hamilton, Lafayette, Newark, North Star, and Sumner. All the rest, self-zone. So if you're not in Elba, Hamilton, or what I reviewed, then you're, you're on your own. It's a self-zone township. Why do we zone? Well, it's pretty simple, really. Um, the biggest thing is not to infringe another person's property. That's probably the biggest deal. The other thing is, you think about it, uh, actually there's industrial, commercial, and residential. And you certainly wouldn't want, well, let's just take a large farm in the middle of a subdivision. I mean, it doesn't make any sense. That's why there's always separation. If you look at the permit activity, you'll see it, it stays fairly consistent. And again, we're only dealing with those, those six townships. So after all that, are questions at all about zoning? Very none.
We leave that up to the experts.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
It's me, I just say go see Bill.
No, it's very.
Says, go see Deandra.
You're not supposed to tell everybody. It's a secret. Everyone know.
Thank you, Bill.
Oh, look at this.
Oh, you got, you got.
Soil erosion. That's me. Yeah. I know who this guy is. It's me. Okay. If you're carrying a couple of these things around, these are state of Michigan licenses. We actually operate on Public Act four fifty-one of nineteen ninety-four, Part ninety-one. I'm not going to go through all that because it's boring. But.
We talked to you. No, I'm just kidding. Yeah.
I know all that stuff. And here's something really unique about Grashit County. Not only am I licensed and been licensed by the state of Michigan for a long time, but so is Deandra. And so is that one guy where there's Miller or something. I don't know. He works here. I'll figure out who he is. Tony Miller is also licensed as an SESC operator. And basically what does it mean? Well, we're not talking about the sand or soil blowing across an open field. Part ninety-one is actually, we do our part for this waters of the state of Michigan. We're trying to protect the waters. Now, go to a construction site, whether it's just a residential, especially around water drain, and you'll see this black fence up. And that, that's important because that is a holder to keep the, the soil and contaminations off the site. And so those are inspected regularly. And we make sure that they're not down, they're not trampled on because when the bulldozer guys get in, that's the first thing they lean for. Look, a black fence. They're going to run over it. Mr. Owens knows that. And so that is, that's our biggest issue. Uh, a lot of our work obviously is done around, uh, Rainbow Lake. And one basic reason we want to keep heads up on Rainbow Lake area is that's in close proximity to Lansing, Michigan, where the Eagle people hang out who are just nuts about driving up freeway and going, oh, look, Rainbow Lake. And so they can stop by and say hi and make sure all the fences up. And Grashit County is doing a part because I'll hear about it if, if they know. You can see by the permit activity, you see the spike. The spike was basically because of the wind turbines. Because that all required, uh, a soil erosion, sedimentation control permit issued. And just backing up to Eagle. If you adhere right to the book, Lansing Eagle wants four inspections, once a permit is written. They would like to see an inspection prior to work being done. Want to see what it looks like, or anything happen. They would like to see what's going on when it starts. They like to see about halfway through and then ultimately want to see when it's finished. When the grass is all green and unicorns run across you there and everything is all nicely, nicely. And that's the point when then I can sign off and finally. That's basically how soil erosion sedimentation control works. Obviously there's a lot more to it than that, but it gets a little sticky and boring. I'll sit here back here. I'll carry your neck, Georgie, so.
Hi, everyone. So for those of you who don't know me, my name is Deandra Messer. Um, I'm the deputy permits officer for the community development department. Um, so I did want to throw one thing out there that I did tell Tony and Bill to mention, but they obviously skipped over it. Um, if you look in your reports, um, at the inspection activity for both building and for blight or for soil erosion, their inspection activity was very high, um, last year in comparison to the previous years. That does tie into the closing out of the turbines and then the new solar, um, projects that came through. But it also ties into for building, the fact that Tony has taken on the inspections for city of St. Louis as well. Um, so I don't expect that high number to be a trend throughout the years, but it is just notable that they were both very busy last year alone on top of everything else with inspections. Um, so just proof that they're doing their job. That's all. So getting into my favorite program, which is blight, um, which is kind of a negative name for it. Um, but as you guys know, we offer an enforcement service for townships who are part of the intergovernmental agreement with the county. Um, basically they have a blight ordinance. And if they have any complaints that come through that they feel are serious enough or need a little extra time, they will send it to our office for enforcement. Um, they are allowed two per year, per township or village. Um, and then Bill and I will basically just handle the actual enforcement process, whether it includes sending letters, um, going out on site for inspections, speaking with property owners. Sometimes we provide resources to these property owners. Um, sometimes it's just a matter of a property owner inherited a property that their grandfather hoarded everything under the sun on their property. And then now they don't know what to do with it. So what we do is we either offer, um, contacts for local services who can come pick that stuff up, whether it's a junkyard, um, or a scrapyard. Um, there are also various businesses within Grashit County that are kind of popping up who help out with the cleaning up of those. So then the property owner doesn't have to do it themselves, um, depending on what state they're in. So I would like to note, I'm sure you guys caught this, um, but I did make an error. So in the report that I submitted, I said that New Haven, Northshade, and Lafayette submitted no complaints in twenty twenty-four. I was wrong. New Haven did submit two. So only two of the townships that we offer the service to did not submit complaints in twenty twenty-four, and that was Northshade and Lafayette. Um, Elba did not submit one, but we did close a case for them that had been open for a couple of years. Um, so that was a success on our end. Um, Fulton submitted one, Wheeler did, North Star. You'll see that New Haven, Ashley, and Parenton did submit their quota of two. And Sumner, it says that they submitted three. And even though their allotment is two, one of the cases that we received was very unique. And we felt that the effort that we could put into it was not there for, in the service aspect of it. Um, so we did offer to take on a third case for them. And I'll explain what happened in Sumner, um, a little bit later. Um, I will note that at the time that I did this report, we had four cases that we were working on with Laura. When it says it's in prosecution, that doesn't mean that we have an open, um, case. It just means that we took it to Laura. We either had her send a letter, um, to basically urge these property owners to bring their property into compliance. That doesn't necessarily mean that she was taken advantage during that time. Um, so if we look at the past four years that we've done this enforcement service, the status of the blight cases, um, in terms of the number submitted versus how many are open each year versus how many we close each year. Um, it's typically an upscale trend. So I will note that about two years ago, we did, we started out with four townships. And now we're at ten. So the fact that it increased, um, was expected. Currently, we can have up to twenty complaints submitted per year. I think the max that we've had submitted was nine. Um, in terms of ones closed, I think the past two years, we have had the longest timeline for open cases. So expected, we want to open a case, contact the property owner, offer the resources for them to bring their property in compliance, and then we can close the complaint. Unfortunately, that's not the reality. Um, and it's not necessarily at the fault of the property owner. Um, sometimes it's just because we can't get in contact with the property owner. Sometimes it's because the property owner can't physically take care of that. Sometimes it's a matter of they don't accept our letters that we send certified mail. So they don't know that we're trying to get ahold of them. Um, there's a number of different factors that extend the timeline of a case. But last year we did make some amendments to the ordinances that the townships have. And that's hopefully going to streamline the process moving forward. Um, in terms of the hours that we actually put into it, so I would like to note that we do work with Laura on these cases. These hours are solely what Bill and I put into it. Um, so that third year, we put in a lot of hours. Um, it was just over three hundred. And then last year, there was about a four-month period where we were asked to halt the acceptance of new complaints. And that was because we were trying to get the new amendment adopted. Um, because if you would accept a complaint, you have to enforce it under the current standing ordinance. And the amendments were supposed to make the process easier, um, for us and for the property owners. So I believe if we hadn't had that four-month stalling period of accepting complaints, we probably would have worked more hours last year. Um, but because of that, we only put in a little over two hundred hours. And those hours can consist of me drafting a letter. Um, it could consist of Bill doing his number of inspections out there. Um, it could consist of the property owner coming in for meetings. Typically, Bill likes to meet them on site because most people feel more comfortable on their turf. And that's what we want is to make them feel comfortable. Um, the purpose of this enforcement service is not to go out there and scare people. I know Bill is very scary, but that's not the goal. Um, we want to help them bring their property into compliance and we want to help their neighbors feel better about the area that they're living. So the unique case that I was talking about, um, this was in Sumner and, um, it started out as a standard case. Received the complaint Ju, last summer, June seventh. Um, there were renters living on the property, which was not uncommon. Um, the uncommon part was the fact that the property owner was deceased. Um, and that was a new one for us because then we were like, who do we contact to bring the property into compliance? As the current ordinance stood, the only liable person for the compliance of the property was the property owner. There, part of the new amendment. There, part of the new amendment was that now any person who is living on it or an inhabitant of the land is also liable. But because this case was operating under the original ordinance, we were unable to contact that property owner. We did a search for family records and we couldn't get a hold of his ex-wife or his wife or either of his daughters. I believe we had an address for all of them. And at that point, we had to go to Laura for a recommendation on how are we supposed to take care of this? Because we can't just go onto someone's property and clean it up for them. So at that point, we had to recommend to the township that they file the property into probate, kind of force it through that probate process. Because even now as it stands, it has not been put through probate, so there's no new owners listed. Except for the gentleman who is deceased. And if the township pushes it through probate as a creditor, then that provides a legal opportunity for them to remove the blighting factors. But that could have been a costly decision for them that they decided against. So unfortunately, at that point, even though we did send a few letters and do an inspection. Bill and I felt that we hadn't really put in the hours that we usually do for these cases, so we offered to accept another complaint from the township. So just some updates on the program itself. This was just within the past year. So in the amendments that we discussed in May of 2024, what we did was we called some of the township supervisors, both participating. And non-participating into a meeting. We provided them an update on the program, what Bill and I thought would be some recommendations for changes. Some of those included defining the blight definitions. This now protects some antique farm equipment. Because if you're in Gresh County, you have a lot of it. The only requirement we have for your grandfather's hundred year old tractor is that you just trim the grass around it. Just make the yard around it look pretty, don't let some trees go through it. It shares the responsibility of compliance between the property owner and any renters. And then it also provides streamlined enforcement for second offenders. So unfortunately, we did have two second offenders who we received a second complaint on their property. And the amendments are now allowing us to streamline the process a little bit. So we don't have to send eight letters and do six inspections on someone who already knows what the process is. Because honestly, that would have been a waste of Bill's time, it would have been a waste of their time. And it would have been a waste of the time and money of the townships for that process. In 2024, again, I mentioned the time commitment that Bill and I put into it was two hundred and twenty-five hours. So recommendations for improvement, and I'll touch base on this, and then Bill can jump in. So currently, the fee that we charge is a thousand for two complaints, so five hundred for a complaint. It's not necessarily balanced out that way when we actually do the work. Hours wise, that can give them about twenty-two hours to put into each complaint. For ten townships, twenty cases, thankfully, we haven't had twenty cases all at once. And at twenty-two hours, it's about four hundred and forty hours that we're offering specifically for blight enforcement each year. This is just the time that we know specifically we would need or should be available for us to offer this enforcement service to these townships. Just last year with the nine cases that we had and the two hundred and twenty-five hours. It turned out to be twenty-five hours per complaint that we were actually putting into it. So I don't know if that means that we need to limit the number of complaints that we handle at one time. I don't know if that means that we limit the number that they can submit each year. But currently, what they're paying for and the time that we can put into it would not cover. The actual number of complaints that we're telling them we can take in. Does that make sense? So yeah, if you have any questions or if you want to add anything.
Blight program. Boys and girls. Was a pilot program that was put together by a prior administrator. Keyword pilot program. And in the beginning, instead of a thousand dollars, it was two thousand dollars. Which was cut. Down to a thousand. Thousand dollars to what Deander is referring to, doesn't cover what we need to do. It doesn't cover my time out there because it takes time away from what I talked about before, as far as zoning and soil erosion. I don't have time to do the job that I need to do, given the hours that I work, it just can't happen. And the money is not there, and it's. It's not. It's not a point we need to throw more money at it. It's a program that does flat done work. Townships. Do not cooperate with us. The townships want everything lily white, the green grass and the unicorns that I talked to before, and that ain't gonna happen. There's your English lesson for this evening. It just, it's not. It's my opinion, and I'm right. But the program needs to go away. It takes up too much time, there's not enough money, we're short staffed, we're not funded. And I think our prosecutor can, can speak to that too, as far as the amount of time. That she has to put in, that takes away from her duties.
I agree with everything that Bill is saying. This was a program that was put into place, I think by Tracy Cordas. When she was the administrator here. And I think we were all on board for trying it. I know I had been a commissioner for years, and at the township meetings that I went to, blight was always a big deal. And it's the repeat offenders, repeat families, and it's tough. The, my first real experience was going out with Bill and Deandra on a property in Northshade. And the number of visits, I started going out also trying to, you know, figure out what we were actually doing. And this is a repeat offender now, this is somebody that's back. So not only does it cause an issue between the county and the township. Who paid for us to fix this problem. We are not going to fix that individual. His blight is his currency. He collects this stuff, he trades this stuff, this is his currency. Unfortunately, he doesn't live out. On a property way out in a township where he has twenty or thirty acres and multiple pole barns and fences to store it behind. Somebody who happens to live across the street from a township hall, so everybody sees it. Every single time you go out there for a township meeting, you're faced with that. But for this person, that is valuable stuff. He can trade it for something. He can use it to fix something else that he has. So, in essence, you know, the township is paying the county to enforce something. That never truly is going to go away for this person. What he did was wheelbarrow load stuff over to his dad's house. So who was our next by blight complaint? His dad. So then we were over at his dad's property, just trying to get his dad to put the stuff inside a pole barn or do something. There are blight issues we can deal with. We can request that they put up a fence. If it's a whole bunch of tires, we got companies to donate. Picking up tires, tire disposal. The supervisor at Northshade actually paid, I think, for a dumpster personally, just to end up, so we did great work. In certain cases, but as a mission or as a job of our county, I, I tend to agree with Bill. I think it was a great idea in theory, but the amount of time. You know, I just meet with them once a week for the most part, and then we started realizing that was just. With all due respect, that was Tracy's requirement, that we have a meeting every week to talk about these cases. We realized we can reach out to each other when we need each other, so it went away from that. Deandra and I have a great system in place. When it's time to move it up the ladder and get the prosecutor's office involved, she does that. We get the letter, I review it, I sign it, we, you know, move the process on, but. I haven't counted up the hours I've spent on this, and I certainly don't mind doing it because I was hugely supportive of it. But when we really look at what we're getting, and are we really prevent, like. Doing a huge service for the townships. I think that's kind of initially how it went in. And especially when we cut it from two thousand per complaint to one thousand. You know, they're still paying a thousand dollars of township money, and I know most of these townships are very stretched. When it comes to paying a thousand for that or having enough money to redo some roads, you know, it, they're tough decisions. And I struggle to really see whether this is something that's, that's hugely beneficial and a huge use of our time. And, and I'm again happy to answer any questions.
Well, I think it's a conversation we'll have to have at a different time.
Agreed.
Thanks, Laura.
That happy note. So yeah, if you guys do have any questions about the blight program. Or about the projects that are going through building or zoning or soil erosion, you are also welcome to stop by our office. George is a frequent visitor, so he could guide you there. And we'll be happy to answer any questions about those. So now we're gonna get into some of the improvements that we're looking forward to in 2025. That's you. That's you.
Back in the blight patients. We still have to fulfill our contracts that are open right now and do our best moving forward until that is completed. I just wanted to touch base on that. Those are grounds, I'm gonna, I've got some numbers, I'm gonna get some additional numbers, this will be at a different meeting. I'm gonna present some capital improvement projects. So that's next on the list. That stuff was budgeted for pre-prove, agreed on. Some of the stuff, I really need to get moving on quick to get a contractor lined up, so. We're gonna start getting some estimates, get some stuff around, then I'll present it to you at a later date, hopefully sooner than later. LED lighting conversion, we had a hundred, a thousand figured annually. For a couple of years, we've done, with the exception of this. I heard today that they did find some compatible lights that we can replace these. But last year, we did everything from the old circuit court. The connector building and district court. Currently, I'm working on a big rebate from consumers on that as well. The next lighting program, I was kind of focusing on, I'd really like to do the jail. But I'll get some, some more numbers and come back again at another meeting with that information. These lights? They, the original ones that they got, the first round, were not compatible.
So compatible in that they weren't LED or compatible, that's not historic, this building wasn't built.
No, they're gonna get replaced. They just had trouble finding.
I thought you were talking about we had to do some compatibility with historic, I'm like, this building's new. There's no, why would we?
Most of those. Yeah, most of the can lights that were installed through the buildings. Were in the suspended ceiling. These are nailed in, they weren't supposed to be removed. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna keep the cans that are there.
I thought it's gonna retrofit these lights here.
Those we haven't done anything with yet.
Talking about the ones little.
We had lights, the ones in the ceiling.
How we're missing.
And everything else.
Going, going for the next big project.
Makes more sense, I was like, what is this?
The next big phase, though, I'd like to focus on the jail. Those lights are on an awful lot over there. We could save the county a lot of money by replacing those LEDs, a lot of money. They don't pay for themselves quick.
Just a quick question. I, I, I agree with a hundred percent. What we're also looking at. Re-doing the jail in, in certain aspects and certain areas. If we go ahead and do the lighting now, or we're gonna have to do it again later.
I gotta talk to Tom and.
I don't want to put, good, oh, we, we gotta change it now.
Like, as far as the sheriff's department goes, those are a drop suspended ceiling. So any new fixtures we put in there, we should be able to remove and reuse.
Sure you don't put a whole lot into it and go, oops.
Yeah, put something brand new and then tear it out a week later, yeah. Absolutely.
I don't want, I just ask the questions.
Yep, yep. Of course, we've got a lot of this stuff already lined up. That was, we had a bunch of projects approved here. Oh, a couple of months ago, going forward to grounds. Community Dad. We're gonna keep doing what we've been doing. I, I've already talked about that. Office development. Reviewing and analyzing state code updates. We are gonna move, there's rumor that we are gonna move finally to the two thousand twenty-four building code. We've been operating off the two thousand fifteen this whole time. They talked about putting, they talked about adopting the twenty twenty-one, and then everybody that was involved with it got upset. Because some of the changes in twenty twenty-one were already omitted and the revised one for twenty twenty-four that they proposed, so. Go out and force something, then two years later say, yeah, you're all right now, that's. Community education, you know, we're constantly trying to figure out ways to. Get townships, get different people involved, give them information. There's some pamphlets that, I saw them earlier. It's good information, you know, somebody goes to their township. Or, or any of these places, you know, that's a whole list and directory of where to go, because when people hear permits. They instantly call us. I get calls, we get calls for all kinds of stuff. So that's just good information to have, you know, they call us up, where do I go for driveway, we go to the. You know, every, it's, it's complicated here. I can see where people get confused. You know, we've got. What, fourteen different? Fourteen different zoning officers plus you. So. State of Michigan handles plumbing, mechanical, electrical. Health Department handles. Well and subject. What's that?
That gets grouped up too, but we don't do the tree.
Yeah, yeah, so.
They'll do the plumbing, electrical or.
So it, it's confusing, so anytime we can give some information out of house. That and when I show up and ask them why they don't have a building, say, I don't know, and say, well, you got the brochure right. But yeah, is that the? I want to thank you guys for letting us jump ahead.
These brothers got another important meeting, I hope it didn't convince anybody. Yours tonight, they're gonna make up some more. At the next meeting, I will give each one of you a pile of brochures. You can bring to your township so they can put them in their office. So when you have somebody come in, ask a question, pick up the brochure, it'll tell you.
Any other questions to ask Deandra?
Always do.
Thank you.
Take care, guys.
You see a lot of graphs, you've seen a lot of this and that, but you know what? Again, I want to thank all y'all for being here and listening to us tonight. A big shout out. To the prosecutor for donating all her time. To our community and taking the time out to be here this evening. Those brochures were solely put together by Miss Deandra, by the way, with her computer skills. If you really, really want to see the real deal, if you want to see. What's happening out there in the real world, never mind the graphs, never mind the. Come see us, go for a ride along, see what it takes to do an inspection. Do what it takes to do a soil erosion, take a peek at some zoning. If you're out in the valley and see the real world out in the county, then you'll know. Thank you.
Who wanted to talk about the zoning violation? That's coming up.
That's a different deal.
All right, the zoning violation. Just a little backstory on this. In. April of last year, we received a complaint about a property in Newark Township. About a guy who built a house and a garage and a pond, and he did not pull a permit for anything. So, per our duties, we have to go investigate these complaints. And I took Bill, myself and Tony out there, because we needed to look at the zoning aspect, we needed to look at the building code aspect. And we need to look at the soil erosion aspect. And it's easier to have three separate inspectors for the three different categories, just to determine. The fact that it's all fair throughout the entire process. So I will note that during that investigation into that complaint, he did have the proper building permits, he did have the proper zoning permits. He originally had the proper soil erosion permit, he just did not realize that he needed to re-up his permit. When he was keeping soil piles on site, so we did ask him to re-up those soil erosion permits. And the gentleman brought his property into compliance. What we noticed during this inspection was that a neighboring property held a building that was very close to the property line. And if you go out to some of the properties, you can't usually tell where a property line is. Either there's trees, or someone builds a pond, or someone forgot where the property line was, so the neighbors mowing your lawn for the past twenty years. Thankfully, this original gentleman had gotten a survey done when he bought the house. So he had stakes outlining clearly where his property line was. The structure was. The structure was, um, by Bill's eye, at least within fifteen feet of the property line. The zoning ordinance dictates that it be twenty feet away from the property line. Um, so at this point, we went back to our office and we looked through permit records, we wanted to know why the structure was permitted approval, um, why our office approved a structure that was so close to the property line, um, if a variance was granted to allow for this. And what we found was that there was records of a building from an application or this structure, um, that was not approved or issued or paid for. Um, there is also a ag affidavit, which basically says the structure will be used for agricultural purposes. Um, it doesn't cost a fee, it's just a form that says it will only be used for ag uses. This form was also not approved. There was a zoning permit application that showed that the setbacks would be twelve feet from the property line, which again is not allowable, it's supposed to be twenty feet. And this application was also not approved or issued or paid for. So at that point, the basic stance is that the office at the time, which was about ten years ago, received applications for a project, but the applications were not approved per our records. So then we had to reach out to the property owner who built the structure without the proper permits. Um, I attempted a certified and first-class mail, and they were returned, um, unopened. And then we asked, after about six months, we asked Laura to send a letter, um, basically just asking the property owner to contact us, um, because technically his property is in violation. And the records show that he did try to pull the proper permits, um, but they were not issued. And at this point, we have not received any contact from this property owner. Per our ordinance's, um, violation enforcement process, so the first step is that our zoning administrator has to let the property owner know, which we did. Um, May seventh of last year, we sent them a letter, basically told them, hey, this is the situation, we're not showing any record of the proper permits, can you contact us because your property is in violation? And we received no response. After that, you're granted thirty days to correct the violation, but the zoning administrator can, um, extend that to six months. So then in August, we, is when we asked Laura to send her letter, um, because then the next step is to move the violation to the, reported to the Gresham County Prosecuting Attorney, who then has to initiate prosecution procedures. Um, and Laura can explain this a little bit better than I can, um, but the basic understanding is that at this point, it would be best for the county, uh, as in the Board of Commissioners, to decide if we want to enforce the zoning ordinance. Um, and at that point, we would need approval to then hire Stoker, which I believe is our attorney, um, to basically enforce this, and it's enforced as a civil fine. Um, I will say it's five hundred dollars plus five hundred dollars for each day that they're in violation. And I think if you do five hundred dollars times fourteen years, it's a bit excessive. Um, so our recommendation was that we would come up with a timeline, maybe from date of contact from property owner, that that fine would be issued. Um, so the other option is that we basically just write this off, that we don't go through the process, um, of enforcement. I will say that we took it to the Planning Commission first, and they recommend that you guys approve that we enforce this section of the ordinance, just for the sole fact that it's not someone who was uneducated, it's not someone who didn't know that they need to do it. Um, in that instance, we would ask that they apply for a variance, because one of the stipulations of a variance is, it's because you didn't know that this needed to be done, and so it's not your fault that you're requesting variance. Unfortunately, this person did know they needed the proper permits, and they still built the building without receiving that paperwork. So, yeah.
To find upstanding citizen. Okay, so you're asking for approval to seek outside legal counsel?
Yes.
Move forward with this, correct?
Yes.
I so moved, it's my township, I've been in contact with you numerous times about this, between the township supervisors and, uh, and, and you folks about this very parcel. Yeah, and I'm glad you went to the Planning Commission, because, uh, you know, we, we have to do something, otherwise, if you don't do something with this one, you know, let's say the next one, and the next one, and the next one, and the next one, so, that's, that's where I stand on this, is if we don't do something, I agree, fourteen years of three hundred sixty-five days, at five hundred bucks a day, um, isn't logical. But we need to come up with something, you know, that, that makes more sense, but that may be something that the attorney gives us advice on as well, so.
They'll figure it out.
Yeah, I mean, we at least should cover our fees for all of you folks' time, the township involves them, and our legal counsel, for sure. So I so moved that we go ahead and authorize you folks to contact Cole, Stoker, and Toski, um, to, uh, get their advice on how we move forward and proceed with this.
I'll second that.
Moved by Steve, supported by Jan, to let you guys seek approval for outside counsel. All those in favor, say aye. Or was nay, motion carried, thank you, DeAndre.
Good one.
All right.
Pardon me, Kim, I skipped over you the last time. You're up.
Okay.
Very quick. Um, I just came tonight to let you know, the last time I was here, I told you I was gonna apply for the grant to reimburse second payment for software. Um, I did receive that on February sixth. So out of the thirty thousand for the new software, the only thing right now I'm responsible for is six thousand dollars. And I'm looking to pay
Yeah.
that six thousand dollars soon, and hopefully find something that will reimburse us for that.
Find another grant to do something else now.
I'm not sure if I need, if you guys want to.
Do we need to approve the acceptance of this, or since we gave you permission to go for it, I'm, I'm not sure.
And it came, the funds come out of the technology.
It's not gonna affect it one way or the other.
Yeah, I don't know whether.
If we, if no action is required, I would suggest we don't do any.
Don't do anything, no.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
Juvenile justice reform.
That's Jennifer.
I'm here this evening, um, to ask for, uh, your blessing to enter into an employment contract with Julie Frick. We can't hear you guys. Oh, I'm sorry. Maybe I gotta take my headphones out.
Waited all this time.
I know, Jen.
Okay, can you hear me now?
No.
Hold on, Matt.
Now? I wonder if it's on the commission's side that there's an issue, cause those of us on Zoom can hear her. Yeah, I mean, I'm not muted or anything, I guess I don't know what else to try. There he is.
Yeah, Matt just got in the room.
Okay, thank you.
Jennifer, I recommend that you disconnect and drag back in.
Okay.
Go away, go away and come back. Then we'll be all gone.
It's a lot of agenda.
Funny, be funny. Come back in and nobody here.
Are you able to hear me?
Oh. Sorry. I'm not working.
Well, not working. Shoot.
Back, but it's not making any difference. She's trying, go ahead, Jen, try to talk one more time.
Okay, can you hear me?
There we go.
Oh, yay. All right, thank you for fixing that, Matt, I appreciate that. All right, I'm here this, um, evening, asking for approval of a, an employment contract with Julie Frick. Um, Julie has been a longtime employee with us. Um, in 2023, the State of Michigan passed juvenile justice reform legislation, and it took effect October first of twenty-four. And it has a lot of requirements that we have to get up to speed with, um, in order to come into compliance. One of the positive things that it did was change the, uh, reimbursement that comes back to the county from fifty percent to seventy-five percent. So there is, there is a financial benefit coming back to the county, but along with that, as you guys know, it also has many requirements. The re, the requirement that I'm here about today is that they are requiring that counties hire a, a local quality assurance specialist. And up until October, we were under the impression that the basic grant counties were exempt from that, and our, it was our understanding, we're a basic grant county, it just as means we're a small rural county that receives a, a basic grant. We were under the impression that the state would be providing us expertise in that area, since they weren't requiring us to hire somebody to do that, like they were the bigger counties. But we found out in October that, um, that, that wasn't the case, they're still requiring us to have all the same expertise. We're just supposed to do it without having to hire someone, I guess, was their idea, I'm not really sure what their plan was, but it requires an expertise that we don't have in our office, well, we do, Julie actually has that expertise. Um, what we have to do is develop policy and, um, for, um, screening and assessments and data gathering and analyzing data uh, for juveniles who come into contact with the juvenile justice system. And so, we are lucky enough to have Julie Frick in our office. Um, she's been a probation offer, officer with us for years. Um, and she also went back and got her master's, um, degree while she's been working full-time with us, which is where she had, she was received the training that's necessary um, to develop what we have to do to come into compliance with the data gathering and the screenings and assessments. So as I looked at this, um, I feel like the best option for us at this point is to contract with Julie to provide these services outside of her daily work with us. Um, I think it, I'm estimating between five and fifteen hours a week, um, for the, the year, and she has already started some of it. Um, but I just can't in good conscience ask her to do this without some kind of compensation. So the contract would give her compensation of forty dollars an hour up to four hundred and sixty hours for the year, the year's time, the fiscal year. Um, and then we'll have to reevaluate at that point and see what our options are going forward, whether that's something that we wanna continue trying to do, or if we're gonna look outside um, of our office to provide those services. What other counties are doing, I did look to see, um, there, some counties are hiring full-time people with Julie's degree, with master's degrees, um, to come on staff. Other people are contracting with PhD, uh, people that have PhDs in this area, um, for about a hundred and fifty to two hundred dollars an hour. So there, there really is no, um, more economical plan than what I've come up with, with Julie at this point. What, you know, we risk, we risk losing the seventy-five percent reimbursement if we don't come into compliance, so that's sort of where we're at, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
So really, Jen, bottom line is, if we qualify, if we do this and we qualify for that seventy-five percent reimbursement, it's really very minimal cost to the county, I think it says forty-six hundred dollars, correct?
A- absolutely, yeah, this is eligible, we're, we're already receiving the seventy-five percent reimbursement, it's just that we would risk it in the future, but yes, this is very minimal, about four thousand dollars, um, the county money. And I, and I've just readjusted my budget to, to accommodate that, so I'm not asking for any new money or anything like that, so.
And Julie is willing to do this, right?
She is, yeah, she's excited about it.
I so moved that we approve, uh, the quality assurance position, which would give four hundred and sixty hours for the year, or a total of eighteen thousand six hundred, I believe, is the total, right?
Four hundred.
Four hundred, eighteen thousand four hundred
Right.
for the year, up to eighteen thousand four hundred for the year.
Awesome.
Moved by Steve, supported by Jan, to hire Julie for up to eighteen thousand four hundred dollars a year. Any more discussion?
Well, does this have to be a roll call, with this money?
Like forty-six hundred bucks.
Forty-six hundred, you want a roll call?
No, it doesn't matter.
I don't think we need a roll call, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or was nay, motion carried.
Thank you, I appreciate that, your time.
You bet, thank you. Sheila, solar reform.
Good evening, everyone, good evening, commissioners.
Evening.
Thank you for being here today. I just wanna thank you, um, all you commissioners, I've been coming here for a year and a half, and you've always been very kind and welcoming and, and patient to listen. Um, sometimes people come here and they don't know what procedure, you know, what group does what procedures. Um, so I wanna, uh, uh, thank you for that, I also want to thank you, um, uh, for your community to this, your service to this community. Um, I understand that you are under tremendous pressure right now because of unforeseen developments that have been uncovered. With good leaders come great responsibilities. Responsibilities can be assigned to others, but this body are the ultimate arbiters when it comes to what happens in Gresham County. It is my understanding that your planning commission is updating ordinances for the solar projects, and also on utility scale battery storage at this point in time. Your planning commission is working on this battery storage ordinance, and is getting the assistance with an environmental group out of Bay City by the name of Spicer Group. The Spicer Group also provides reports for the solar projects. This group has worked with DTE, providing reports for the solar, for the Mission Road Solar Park at Isabella County. It is my understanding that civil engineering groups such as this provide services to both public and private groups, however, the optics of using this company to help write law for a local municipality is questionable. According to several sources, the United States is number two in the world for utility-scale battery storage fires. We just had a major fire at Moss Landing in California that released smoke plumes posing health and safety threats to humans and wildlife. I am no expert on lithium-ion battery fires, but I have talked to one, and I can get you that information if, if you request it. I was, it was suggested that any municipality should look into a non-bias source to produce reports for its battery storage systems. Speaking of ordinances, they are influenced by what is outlined in the county's master plan, which is also being drafted at this point in time. Greater Gresham Development in collaboration with a consulting firm will be describing the long-term vision for the future of Gresham County. Greater Gresham Development states that its highest priority is to create jobs and enhance the local tax base. According to them, their goal is to retain, expand, and attract business and industry, and to participate in activities which enhance the economic climate of Gresham County. They have been instrumental in attracting businesses and groups to generate economic growth. Among their notable achievements was their assistance in the development of the wind projects. Gresham County is now known for being a leader in wind energy, and according to them, this county has over four hundred turbines. In 2023, one of their focused areas was in solar development due to the infrastructure already in place from the turbines, making solar development economically viable. Gresham County has two solar projects, one in North Star Township and the other in Pine River Township, and another that will be upcoming in Bethany Township. Greater Gresham Development is a nonprofit organization that has staff, board members, partners, and donors, and is funded partly by the taxpayers of Gresham County through a millage. Among several donors listed on their website are Consumers Energy and ITC Holdings, both of which are energy-related businesses. What influences, if any, do the donors have in the development of the master plan? Is the so-called green energy development going to be prioritized over Gresham County's agriculture? Last year, Greater Gresham Development, along with their consultants, hosted a public input session. Members of the public were invited to discuss the goals and strategies for the county over the next several years. I don't know if there was more than one public input session, but this is the only one that I had heard of and attended. I signed in, looked around, and recognized that the room was a majority of elected township members and other community leaders. I sat next to two young men who came from Detroit and were representing DTE, an energy company who has several energy projects in Gresham County. Who invited them to a Gresham County public input session? Is that normal? When asked by a representative of Greater Gresham Development who they were representing, they stated DTE and that they were there to observe. I found it curious, though. No one asked me who I was representing. Additionally, it was said during this session that surveys were sent out to the community, and there were 314 surveys returned. They based all of their graphs and charts on 314 people that were supposed to represent Gresham County. Greater Gresham Development states that results of the survey indicated that nearly 70% of the group was in favor of the energy development. In my experience, the majority of Gresham County residents have a very negative view of the energy projects. This survey pool they referred to is not big enough to be accurate and begs to question how many surveys were sent out and to whom. Did anyone here receive a survey? I know my family did not. Are the goals put forth in the updated master plan regarding renewable energy projects on farmland, really what most Gresham County taxpayers want for their future? This master plan that is being developed will guide Gresham County over the next 20 years. It's important to get it right, and in having Greater Gresham Development write policy for the county, it is imperative that it be made crystal clear that their missions and activities support taxpayer interests. Gresham County's previous master plan, I believe, was also written by Greater Gresham Development. In 2019, the master plan indicated, among other things, that agriculture is a major component of Michigan's identity, character, and economy, and that once agricultural land is developed, it is unlikely it will ever be farmed again. And that as rising transportation costs become a growing concern for the state and nation, communities may need to rely more heavily on local food sources in the future. We cannot rely on local food sources in the future if the land is covered in solar panels, and I wonder if this statement will bleed into the next master plan, considering the amount of money these energy companies are offering. However, the financial promises that the energy companies make are being broken around every turn. Years-long litigation with depreciation of the turbines and now tax exemption requests by DTE. Will DTE continue to break its promises? Will DTE break its promises in the future to the landowners who sign leases? As a self-reporting entity, DTE is supposed to disclose when new equipment is brought into the current wind farms. With the ongoing disputes with DTE, I wonder if they report every blade brought in or every upgrade performed. Last summer, blade after blade went by my dad's property in North Star Township, and as a matter of fact, at least one blade has laid on the ground for months on Blair Road behind a substation. Are they going to start littering sites with blades they don't know what to do with? Currently, DTE has temporarily converted a part of the field adjacent to my dad's home into a roadway for more blades to come in soon. I just had some pictures that I wanted to share. They're not in sequence, so just bear with me. This picture here is just an example of what Gresham County will be: solar, wind, high transmission power lines, and substations. Data centers are now being considered as well and will require massive amounts of energy. What will that infrastructure look like and who will be impacted? Which button, Deandra? I tried it. It didn't move. Okay, this picture is of dead and dying trees. There are several of these. This picture was taken in July. As someone who has interest in what happens when solar farms come in next to residential areas, it would be extremely important to myself and other non-participating property owners that our way of life be considered. If the solar ordinance that the planning commission has not been finalized, we would like to see greater setbacks, landscape berms, and solar inverters to be placed in the center of a project to give us some say in what we will have to live with for the next 50 years or more. This picture is just showing more, more dead trees. This is just a picture of ongoing construction. This picture was taken in December of a huge mound of soil. This is just some water that has been, there's a lot of water in this project. This was taken in January, actually, January 1st. This picture was taken in Bethany Township, I believe, in preparation for the upcoming solar project. I have a friend in Bethany Township who has been documenting a pair of eagles and their nest that is right above the field where the solar panels will be. I saw this nest myself and wonder how this project will affect them raising their young when their hunting grounds are no longer good for food. Another thing that is happening to our forests is that the DNR has signed leases with the solar companies for thousands of acres of state land in Michigan. Up to 4,000 acres are at stake. The DNR then mentions that they will look into purchasing replacement land, therefore taking forested land away from future private landowners. I know this has nothing to do with Gresham County, but it just goes to show that the destruction that's taking place in forested areas. This picture is showing, the ordinances state that they have to have chain link fencing or other kind of fencing, and this one is just showing they've got a wooden panel in there. This picture was taken in July, showing glare from the solar panels. This was, I was on the roadway, and this was between 2:00 and 3:00 o'clock in the morning. The ordinance states there should be no glare. As you can see, there's a lot of glare there. This picture is showing that giant mound of soil. You can't see this picture very well, but there is a semi there in the lower right corner. Compared to the semi, you could see how large this pile of sand is or dirt is. This is located in a field behind a residence on Hayes Road. This, hundreds of loads of soil, once grew crops for decades, and is now what some people refer to as spoils, meaning that it has lost its quality to sustain healthy plant life. The landowner has traded this once productive soil for growing food for solar panels. But it's not my dirt, not my decision. It's their land, their right to sign energy leases. These renewable energy developers gain access to farmland under the guise of rights and offers of financial promises, and convince local opposition and communities that no one has a say except the leasing farmer. Neighbors are being told that they have no right to object. However, this is not just about one landowner's decision. Every lease signed affects the entire community. Neighbors have to live next to the approved projects where the glare of the solar panels, the loss of prime farmland, and the change in landscape and depreciated property values is their reality. Our local economy takes hits as well. The developers promise prosperity, but we have already witnessed broken promises, and most jobs disappear after construction, and local businesses suffer. This is just another picture showing that there's wooden panels mixed in with the chain link fencing. This is just another area where there's standing water. This is showing a pile of clay that's been taken out of the soil and is now in that huge pile of dirt. This is showing this is showing a water that is just collecting there. Could there be broken field tile? It looks like a ditch. It is not standing water. We don't want that one yet. Can I do that one at the end? Was it? Okay. Well, there were three other pictures that didn't get on there. One, I think you'll be discussing today, and actually, I want to back up a little bit. There are other pictures that I took that show many areas where the silt fence, Bill was just talking about silt fences and how important they are. There were silt fences that were down, so there was water and silk coming out. If interested, your planning commission has these photos. And then there was another picture that was discussed, what's going to be discussed tonight in Pine River Township about DTE requesting a tax exemption. I would encourage anybody to attend at 7:00. And then I was just going to point out that it's very unfortunate. I had a Gresham County Herald information on there about your administrator, and I just wanted to say it's an unfortunate event, what's happened. It's a wake-up call. I believe this board can overcome this adversity with oversight, transparency, and accountability by creating a system of checks and balances. Let's not forget the broken promises. According to the Michigan Public Service Commission through PA 233, Section 226, 6 and 7, when they are tasked with citing these wind and solar projects, when it's no longer in the county's hands, they look into and take into consideration diminished farmland and percentage of lands dedicated to energy generation. With over 400 turbines, three solar projects, high transmission power lines, and substations, I think we have met that criteria. With our new administration halting the Green New Deal, it is hopeful that our tax dollars will stop subsidizing these energy projects, but that does not mean we are out of the woods by any means. With any luck and Lord willing, maybe we will get a reprieve to the destruction of field and forest. And then I just wanted to show that very last clip, please.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
You talked about, you're bringing in the fins for the wind turbines. Are they changing what's up there, or are they just, are these new ones that's going to be going up?
Is there new ones? As far as I'm concerned, are you referring to what I discussed about the blades coming through?
Yes.
Yeah, they've got to be new ones. They're bringing them in and installing them. So there's, last summer, it was blade after blade, like I said, new blades coming in. They're getting ready to bring some more in soon.
This was wondering. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, Sheila.
Okay, so as you all know, I have been working on the new recycling plan that is required by the state, the MMP. So we've had the solid waste, a solid waste plan for years and years that has not been touched since the year 2000. Now we have to have this materials management plan. We have been working every single month. The group is getting together, the eight counties, and we are now at the point that we have the basis of how we intend to run this program. So what I have before you today is essentially just the bylaws. These have been reviewed by several legal, legal within several counties, and it's just what this group has come to agree to how we are going to run.
Sheila, where is this machine that they want to build, that $15 million machine that's going to be recycling?
That is going to be in Isabella County, but that is separate from this.
Oh, okay, because Nicole told someone at a meeting that I was at that was going to be in Detroit. The machine is going to go there.
I'm under the impression that they are redoing the Isabella County one through lots of grants and lots of fundraising. I have not heard anything about it going to Detroit, but that's a separate project.
Okay. My group, where I'm at, my people that I represent, they're not going to be a part of this. They've already, they've already got a tenure contract that they signed last year.
Yep, and this MMP, this doesn't take away from that contract at all. This provides access, additional access to people. It is not going to tell anybody that they have to recycle.
But the county will still pay $60,000, is it, every year?
No, that's state money that's coming into the county. We're not paying for it.
You know, okay.
And this is just the bylaws of how to move.
Do you know if one of the counties, because like our attorneys are cool still.
Cole has looked at it several times.
Yeah, okay, that's, I know they, well, I didn't know. I'm asking you, do they represent one of these other counties? So they have.
They have looked at it, yes.
Their eyes on this, and they approve what is on here.
Absolutely.
So you didn't, you weren't looking for any action. You're just giving us information.
You do, we do need to, you are the governing body, so you do need to.
She needs.
You do need to sign the bylaws that this is what we will use as.
This is the next step in creating.
Is that just for you?
Yeah.
Which will have a board member, or there's several people.
It's the DPA. It's a business that provides, that does, produces waste, which is the Gresham Conservation District, and then an elected, which is Michelle Pitts from the city of and Granger. They've come before us lots of times and really have said their intention to work with us, and we're really, really close to actually seating this committee, and there is no reason that Granger will not be a part of that. So.
Is there some reason why they haven't been so far?
Haven't been so far, well.
Part of the.
Because the committee hasn't been seated yet. They've been at all meetings.
I just talked to them, and I said they have not been invited to the meetings. This is, is it Granger? Yeah, Granger.
Charles.
I've got it on my phone.
They were just at the last meeting that we were just up in West Branch.
Okay, this was a couple of weeks I've talked to them. Okay, I'll give you.
And we meet again on Friday.
Okay. I've got their name. I'll give it to you later.
Absolutely.
I'll go ahead and make a motion then that we would approve the bylaw. Support, moved by George, supported by Steve, to approve the Heartland MMPC bylaws. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Action carried.
Nope, it is. I'm going against it. I'm saying no.
Okay. Jan said no. Next up, earned sick time.
Okay, so that's me again. So the state of Michigan has, as of this moment, passed a new law as far as paid sick time. It instructs every employer, big and small, that for every 30 hours an employee works, they earn one hour of sick time. Now, I have provided a policy. This policy is directly from what that law is. I just want to make sure that I am very, very clear right up front. It is still in negotiations. This is supposed to go into effect on Friday. I looked as of 4:00, and they are still debating this and what this is going to look like. So you need to move on this tonight because we have to be ready in case this does not change. But there is a great chance that the law will be completely different by Friday.
So you say this is everybody. Is that like the schools?
Everybody.
Everybody.
This is, this is a seasonal, so our Parks and Rec kids that come in, this is our part-time, our, everybody.
The one who employs somebody in the state of Michigan.
Every employer.
So for us to accept this policy, you know, do we accept it as written, which doesn't do anything, because if they change it?
Correct, but we can't not, because if they don't change it, which Governor Whitmer has encouraged the legislature, that if they can't get to, they can't get to an agreement by Friday, she is encouraging them to wait until July 1st, to give them more. she is encouraging them to wait until July first, to give them more time to work it out. Because the Senate's got one, the House has got another one, and they're getting closer, they're just not there yet. So it, it is possible that at eleven fifty-nine on Thursday, they say, we're going to hold off until July first. But we have to be ready.
There is a couple of ways that we can go about this, right?
Yes, so initially, the policy, um, I think the best thing is to, um, look at the policy and approve the policy, and then after that, we need to talk about how that actually functions, because that's a separate issue than what the policy.
What we have to do tonight is approve the policy?
Both.
We have to.
I have a, so this is going to put a lot of people out of, out of business, isn't it?
No.
I, I, I mean, it gives, it's, it definitely is an improvement to employees, and it will potentially negatively infect, affect employers, which is why the Michigan Chamber, um, and other businesses are really pushing for a change. So one example of a change, like in Grasset County, we have a PTO bank. Our PTO bank is far exceeds what these expectations are. The way the law is currently written, it doesn't matter. We have to have a sick time bank, even though we have PTO. What the Michigan Chamber is saying is they're like, they would be saying, they're already giving more time than this, so why not have just the one bank?
Well, I'm thinking about places like restaurants, like McDonald's or Myers or places like that.
There already is a law, so places like that already are doing one hour for every thirty-five work. So the, this is a law that already stands, this is just a little bit of a change. Now it affects us, whereas it did not before because we have that PTO tag.
So every hour for every thirty workers, one hour.
So for every thirty hours you work at the school, you were, one hour of sick.
So you have less than ten employees, how many? You don't, you don't have to worry about it?
Nope, you still do, it's, it's just, it's just a little different, the accrual of it. It's still one hour for every thirty.
Okay.
So yes, this, this has the potential to negatively impact employers, certainly.
I, I will probably be voting against it, because I've been an employer. And by the time you, I mean, there's not much money left by the time you pay your employees and buy your supplies.
And what I will say is, you can vote against the policy, but it's not actually going to change it. It will be law on, on Friday.
But I was still, for the record, I'll vote against it.
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we would adopt the, uh, Grasset County Earned Sick Time Policy as written.
To align with the state of Michigan required.
Yeah, agree.
All that stuff.
By George, supported by Steve to support the Earned Sick Time Act for Grasset County.
Should have a roll call on this.
Okay.
Right. Commissioner Gay.
No.
Commissioner Sapsy.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting.
No.
Commissioner Owens.
Yes.
Okay, now the second part is how that functions. Um, so we already do have a PTO bank in which our employees earn sixteen hours, a full-time employee earns sixteen hours of PTO, um, per year, yeah, or per month, excuse me, and I will say that this is only, what you're voting on right now is only going to affect that those people that are not a part of a union, because anybody that's part of their union, they finish out their contract, and then it will be negotiated into their contract. So this is for our non-union, um, employees. So essentially, we can keep the PTO bank just as it is and add the sick time that's already, that's required, state required, or you can separate that PTO bank out and say do ten hours of PTO per month earned, and then six hours accrued of sick time, which will make sure that we are meeting the legal requirement and the staff will have those two separate banks. So you guys just really need to establish how it is that you want this to.
My next question to you is, how does staff prefer to handle it? Because it's your, you got to handle it, so.
I think the easiest, administratively, the easiest way is because the accrual is different than our PTO, is just to add that sick bank onto every employee. The one benefit of this law is that it does not require the sick time be paid out at the end, so it is not, it's not creating a large liability for the employer. What it is creating is just the cost of having to cover somebody being out sick. So there isn't a large, um, when somebody's going to retire, somebody's going to leave, there's not a large cost involved with that. Um, so administratively, that would be the easiest way to do it.
You, you said something about ten hours a month, what, where did that come in?
Um, I just did the calculations, if somebody was working full-time, um, that accrual of one hour for every thirty hours. That would get us above that minimum.
Is that a month or a week?
A month.
Yeah, so if they worked thirty hours in a month, they would get one for you out.
All right, go ahead.
So you're, they're not going to hire kids from schools because, um, like you said, most kids will work thirty hours in a week, like at McDonald's or Subway and.
But they're already earning this, they've already got this system in place at McDonald's, because it's, because it's a law currently.
They've already got it.
Now, the ten hours a month, though, let's get an hour for every sixteen hours of work. Correct?
Probably. But we, it, it's not accrued now. PTO is just given at the beginning, on the first day of the month, so it's not accrued. If we switch it to this.
Gets.
Yes. Full time.
Because this is only affecting our non-unions, right? So all of them are full-time, correct?
At this time, yes.
No, I mean, our part-time people aren't necessarily part of our union, our security guards aren't currently part of the union and, and, but they are already part-time, so they're already getting part-time sick. So we already have this system in place, we're already using it.
Well, I would have loved to work ten hours and got a free paycheck and another hour.
Thirty hours, guy.
Thirty.
Thirty, well, that's, yeah, but I worked, I worked at the schools, I worked thirty hours a week. So four weeks, I would have had four hours extra pay.
No, you would have had four hours of sick time. So that you could, so that you could use it for doctor's appointments, or if your, if your child has, um, you know, an IEP at the school and you need to go for something like that.
So if you don't use it, you don't get it. Or you, how do you get it, it paid?
You don't get paid out for it. It's not, it's not, Michigan does not require that it be paid out. So far. Correct.
All right, so I just go ahead and make a motion that we, uh, would allow staff to do what's the most convenient for, for them at this time. As far as the cruel goes.
Actually, do you want to say the motion that you would prefer? That that would be.
Yes, um, I would say that you would like to implement the paid sick time adding on the, the, the sick bank in addition to the PTO.
Whatever she wants. Trying to make it easy for the staff. Another unfunded mandate by the state of Michigan.
To support.
Well, this is our.
George made a motion and he.
For this Grasset County Earned Sick Time Act policy.
Moved by George, supported by Steve. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
What was nay?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, next up. Delar.
Side.
Laris Wind Farm Updated Decommissioning Study. Actually, I'd like to table this. We talked to, uh, an attorney.
You got to get Fahey involved?
Which one are you?
I made a motion to table.
Yeah.
Yeah, you also table that.
Because those haven't been reviewed by legal counsel.
Yeah, hadn't been, hasn't been reviewed by legal counsel yet. That's what.
I think.
Need, need a second. Or moved by Tim, supported by Steve to table the Laris Wind Farm Decommissioning Study. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
What was nay? Motion carried. Moving on. Resolutions twenty-five dash three thirty, credit card transaction.
So I, so I, I guess I'll talk on this, um, because I think this was started, um, before the last meeting, but didn't make it to the agenda on the last meeting, because I think it's something that the auditors are requesting that we have on file. Now, personally, my office, we have our own credit card company, I have a contact with GovPay, and how that stands is the fees that they charge are charged to the people who are requesting to use a credit card, it's not a county expense. Um, so I don't know if Terry knows any extra about the resolution, but it was typed up, I think it's a standard resolution that every county might have on file, and I think Ally is just requiring that we have this on file, and she may be able to help us when she is up.
I understand it as a new requirement by the auditors. For us to have a resolution, we have a policy in place, but we do not have.
You know, I actually have a resolution that we can use county credit cards.
Like I said, we do have a policy.
Yeah.
Just don't have a rest. Not that we can.
I saw move that we approve resolution two-five dash three-three-zero in reference to, uh, acceptance of a credit card transaction and use fee services.
Second. By Steve, supported by Tim. To support resolution twenty-five dash three-three-zero. Have a roll call.
Commissioner Sapsy.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Gay.
Yes.
Commissioner Owens.
Yes. Motion carried. Okay, moving on. Grasset County Engagement Letter with Yo and Yo.
Ally's been sitting around a long time.
Sorry, Ally.
Oh, there you go.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you too.
Okay, good, very good. Yes, well, the engagement letter before you is related to forensic audit services. Um, this is kind of the, the next step in handling, um, the county administrator situation. Um, it was recommended by the Michigan State Police that the county undergo some form of forensic auditing um, to further investigate the situation. And so this is an engagement letter from our firm. Um, because it requires certain designations to do this type of an audit, I personally will not be the one performing the audit, nor would I want to be, because you want some separation of who is looking at things. So there is a, a secondary team that, um, does forensic auditing services, and it would be that team that would be involved with your engagement and performing the forensic audit. Um, they have preliminarily been brought up to speed on what, um, came about as a result of the financial statement audit. And so this is just here for your consideration this evening. Um, once an engagement letter is signed, then there is a planning process that starts for a forensic audit. And then depending on the level of information, once a team gets in there and the cooperativeness of those at the county, a forensic audit could get done in three months. Um, if there's a lot there and a lot of rabbit holes that have to be gone down, it could take nine months or maybe more. It's really hard to, to pinpoint an actual timeframe until they start working on procedures um, and kind of roll up their sleeves and, and see what's there. And if you, if you have questions, if you want to know more specifics, that's what I'm here to answer for you.
Well, I'd just like to throw this out for the whole board. In, in here, they, they're asking to go from January two thousand seventeen to, to current date. I request that we go back two far, two years farther. The reason why I request that is that we, that ensures the board we're clean here. Going, if we go back two years, that cleans up any doubt in anybody's mind that anything else happened. We want to make sure everything's clean going forward. If we only, only, only go to the, the seventeenth, when, when employment started to this date, we don't know if anything else was involved back anywhere else.
You want to go back.
So if, but if we go back two years, we know if it's clean, we're good to go. If we have a problem, we'll discover it.
Is that how that works, Ally? Because I was on that phone call um, a couple of weeks ago now. Is that how that works? You guys can go back that far? Or with the forensics of how you're going to be looking into things, obviously, with what you have discovered and what the state police are working on, that you're familiar with, um, gives you some ideas of where to be looking, but you can go beyond that target date as well.
So.
Of what person looked here.
If you wanted to increase the time period that was being looked at, then you would have to have some idea about what it is we're looking for. So if it's, if it's similar to the current matter, and you just want those same types of procedures done, then the time period could be backed up two years. Um, but it's not, this engagement letter is not an open-ended, we're looking at every single transaction that ever happened. It is li, somewhat limited in scope, um, to, to cover kind of what's already been uncovered and expand upon that. So adding on time is okay, but then we're gonna, we would have to figure out what exactly it is we're, we're looking for in that timeframe, and, and who.
Now, forensic audit specifically looks for wrongdoing?
Cor, correct, yes, it's, it's much different from a financial statement audit, and a financial statement audit, we're looking at what we know is there and what we think should be there in issuing a financial statement. A forensic audit is saying, okay, there's, there's an issue, and we're trying to nail down either, um, how much is involved in the issue, or if there are other, um, other ways that something inappropriate is happening. But yes, it's, it's looking for presumably something that's wrong.
So, um, are you familiar, uh, well, will Yo and Yo do this forensic audit? You said that someone else will.
Yes, it's, it's still Yo and Yo, but
Still Yo and Yo.
It's with staff that have the certified fraud examiner certifications. So they are specifically trained in this type of examination.
Now, are, are you familiar with the yearly audit that just happened?
Yeah, she's the one doing it.
She's the one that does it.
Okay, you're the one that does it.
Yeah.
So I, you know, I, I think, uh, people of Grasset County should know exactly what happened. You, you found that Chris took twenty-three thousand dollars? Is that it?
Well, we, at this time, we have not published and released the final results of our audit, so I'm not at liberty to publicly discuss that at this time.
Okay, so, well, Chris resigned anyway, so. Okay.
Some legal matters to deal with.
So, right now, Ally, we're, this letter is to go back to January twenty-seventeen, which is just before he started to work for us, correct?
Correct.
George has asked for twenty-fifteen, but in order to go back that far, we have to give you a specific target of what you're going to be looking for, correct?
Correct.
In order to go back further.
Correct.
So that's what we, as a board, need to decide.
And I, and I said that in the same vein, we'd be looking for the similar problem.
Okay. Because that's, I'm like.
Similar area.
Good, so that's, you know, I.
Because I don't know in my heart of hearts how you'd do anything else other than it happened.
Yep.
And I just wanted to make sure that.
I understand what you're trying to do, because, trust me, I want this to be one and done if we.
Well, I, I do too, and I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to. Well, I, I do too, and I don't, I don't want to, I don't want this to act. So if we can start that same premise that we're going, well, what we'd be doing now, but go back a couple of years with that same premise, just to make sure that we're satisfied. Nothing else got brought forth, you know what I'm saying? I, I would just like to do that. It's going to toss a little more, but
Yeah.
I think it'll put a, a, a question out of our minds.
I, I agree, I agree. So, uh, you're, you're not done with the regular yearly audit yet?
Correct.
Correct. When, when will you be done with that?
We will probably issue that sometime mid to late March.
March?
Yes.
So theoretically, like April meeting, we'll, you'll come in and present that though.
Correct.
Okay. Why, why didn't you catch this in the last audit, the one, the previous year? Did it not happen or?
Yeah.
Well. A financial statement audit is not designed to detect fraud. That is not the point of doing the annual financial statement audit. Now, sometimes as a result of these audits, we can find fraud. And in, in this case, there are questionable transactions that we're looking at. But it's, that's not the point of a financial statement audit to find fraud.
As I said, do we have to vote on something?
I'll, if we want to. Yeah.
But the, the, the document we have in front of us is to go back to January twenty seventeen. So we, will it change the amount that you guys would need as your, um, container?
No.
Anything? Okay.
It will not change.
It may change the range that he has listed in here, which is talked to us on the phone about.
Yes, it will likely change the range, because if you're going to add on two years, as Mr. Bailey, then obviously there's, yeah, yeah. So we would.
Mind, I'm, 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 I, I would win along this for the county to spend the money so that all the taxpayers had that same peace of mind.
I'm with you, I just want to be sure they.
Yeah.
And is this the document or, I mean, I, I said, I want this thing to get started. But should we allow?
Amendment.
Mike, do redo this?
Yeah.
That before we vote on it?
We can amend it, as, as amended.
My recommendation would be that you do some type of approval for Commissioner Owens to be able to sign a letter that has been updated to expand for those additional two years and expand the, the quoted range.
Thank you, Ally. I saw move that we authorize Chair Owen to be able to sign into a letter of agreement with Yo and Yo for the fraud investigation, forensic audit, giving them the latitude to go back a couple of extra years and make the, the appropriate adjustments as necessary before he signs.
Second.
And pay the retainer.
Yes, and pay the retainer what they require.
Okay. Moved by Steve, supported by Tim.
I think we should do. Ten thousand.
Yep, we need a round of applause.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunty.
Yes.
Commissioner Gay.
Yes.
Commissioner Sapsi.
Yes.
Commissioner Owens.
Yes.
Thank you, Ally, for, appreciate it. You've been there a long time.
Next up, Woodhill Contract.
What do you have here?
I'm not sure.
They weren't going to show up?
I'll put this on, I think you sent this to me.
I guess I thought Ally was going to talk. Oh, she did, she knocked with Woodhill.
Well, that's disappointing, we needed, we needed to talk about this.
So, so Woodhill Group have, has worked with our treasurer's office and admin in order to change our chart of account numbers to get us up to, so that we're compliant with the state. And then I think they helped with some depreciation issues in the treasurer's office. So they are willing to stay on to do any of our work, I guess, in the admin office, but I don't know what the scope is that they would be doing.
Yeah.
So.
Let's call finance. The only question I have, and that's why I was hoping they would be here, is that it came out of administration. Uh, and we, after reading over services as follows, what really ha- needs to happen also is they need to reconcile the general fund bank statements. That really needs to happen and it hasn't happened for a while. And so that's one of the things that they're going to be asked to do, so.
That's not listed on here, right?
It's listed on.
Needs to be added.
That's right.
Yeah, that's, when you and I talk, that's something that has to be added.
Yeah, it needs to be added to it. So I just wanted to make sure that that was added and they knew about it. That's why I was kind of.
I had discussed it with them. And I believe it says in the scope of work there, they are, they review the bank reconciliation. You want them to.
I want them to do it, because we seem to have a.
It says review bank reconciliation process.
They don't have a checking balance. And it was suggested that they do that, so it makes it better.
Yeah, just clean. We want it clean.
I just think about that, and she said they do that.
Yeah, so. Just, I just wanted to make sure that it was incorporated in the, into the agreement so that everybody understood that that's.
I will email Colin, who takes care of contracts in the morning, and change that. I will get it and then I will send it out.
Okay.
Do you want it on the next agenda or do you want to prove it with that?
Well, let's do approval with the amendments. They're going to take, I just want them to be aware of it, so they do.
Because I got to change your hourly rate.
It's not going to change anything, it's just another addition to the.
Just, you know, instead of being review bank.
We, we can't, we can't, we can't.
Yes, the rates aren't going to change. Yeah, the, the rates aren't going to change, so.
No, no.
Understand that, I understand.
Well, I saw move that we move into a service agreement with Woodhill Group Accounting to take care of as posted with the amendment of the, as stated, that they will not only review the bank reconciliation process, but they will complete that on a monthly basis. Come on, what's that?
Or more frequently. Moved by Steve, supported by George, to enter into a service agreement with the Woodhill Group to work with our county. We need a roll call.
Just for clarification before we vote, this does not have, we're not locking into a set amount of time, correct?
No.
Okay, as things change and evolve.
It's a living document.
Okay, that's, I wanted to be clear.
Yeah, we're the living doc.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those nay, motion carried.
Unfinished business.
Unfinished business.
So I'll cover that one as well, because I was absent at the last meeting and I should have added the totals. Um, St. Louis, City of St. Louis, their actual grant was thirty-nine thousand, sixty-one dollars and thirty-one cents, not thirty-six thousand, sixty-one dollars and thirty-one cents. But the original amount that you guys approved of the eighty-four thousand, seven ninety-two one is correct. So you're not adding more money, you're just making sure that the three thousand gets to where it's supposed to go.
Or do you want to correct it?
Just motion that we pay City of St. Louis thirty-nine thousand.
Someone?
Thank you. Thank you.
Moved by George, led by Jan, to award St. Louis, the City of St. Louis, thirty-nine thousand, sixty-one dollars and thirty-one cents for the park grant. All those in favor, say aye. Those nay, motion carried.
I make a, a motion to consideration to enter the finance meeting and take a, a five-minute break.
Sounds good to me, I'll, I'll, I'll support that.
We'll do that before we get.
I think it's cool.
So I guess I better go.
You've got it right. Uh, just depends on the moment. Boy, your camera is really nice. Me that she was such a.
So. So.